All right, I'd like to call this meeting at your Newark City Council order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for coming. Autumn, please call the roll.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Marmee.
Here.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Riletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
We have all here this evening. Next on the agenda tonight is the invocation. That will be by Mrs. Floyd, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Could we ask that we have a moment of silence with all of the events that have happened in this country recently, and today being the anniversary of December 7th, 1941? I think it's appropriate that we spend a few minutes, or a minute, in silence, please. Heavenly Father, we know we live in a dangerous world, and that's brought to us more and more these days, unfortunately. Help us to work together to try to solve the problems that this world brings to us, remembering basically the core values of this country. During this time, holiday time, which tends to be happy for most, but it also tends to be difficult for those who don't have enough, for those who are facing illness, for those who are alone, or who have lost someone that they love. We ask that you be with those people, and help us to remember them as we're having happy times ourselves. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for the city, grant us your wisdom and guidance as we discuss these issues. We ask this in your name. Amen.
William, would you like to help me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance certified by the United States of America, and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything that may feel appropriate about the agenda this evening. Do we have any? Next, we have the minutes of the November 16th, 2015 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have five reports this evening, a standing committee, one from finance, one from service, one from capital freedom, one from rules, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under appointments this evening, we have a reappointing of Mark Modder, Sue Spicer, Mark Sharp, to the Etna Corporate Park Joint Educational Development Zone One, ECP, JZ One Board. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Thank you. Those will be reappointed. We have two reports of city officials this evening, one from Stephen Johnson, our city auditor, the operating report for the period ending November 30th, 2015, and one from Barb Jobs, our city tax administrator, the Newark City Income Tax Revenue Report for a period ending November 30th, 2015. Without objection, those both will be received and filed. Under communications, we have one this evening by Paul Moran, his comments and concerns from the November 16th, 2015 Newark City Council meeting. That will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda tonight, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens, one now and one after the legislation. Basically, this is not a debate with council, this is just your opportunity to be heard. Mr. Richard.
I'm William Butcher, 263 Union Street. Here this past day or Thanksgiving, I went down to see the courthouse lighting. When I looked at that courthouse up, it was really beautiful. This past week, I went down to see the courthouse itself. It was all totaled up. It was really nice. I went down there again this evening, that courthouse was really, really lit up, and the courthouse looked really beautiful. I passed.
Thank you, William. Anyone else in this first section? Again, there's one other section after the legislation.
David Green, 1791 Olympic Court. Wanted to say a little bit about changed economic and political conditions that are in this country and in this community as well, and wanted to lay the basis for the kind of, some information or some discussion about the fact that changes in this economy are going on regardless of what happens in Newark in many ways. Very large changes, changes in terms of the electronics revolution, meaning the introduction of labor-replacing technology and many, many, many jobs, so that a large part of the new workforce, the new jobs that are available to most people, and I hear this more and more, and friends and colleagues tell me the same thing, that the jobs that are available are very low-wage, very part-time, temporary. The Bureau of Labor Statistics, for your information, if you don't already know this, actually counts somebody as unemployed, as being employed if they work one or more hours a week. I'd encourage you to look that up if you don't already know that. That means that the statistics in terms of defining who is unemployed and what's going on are, belittle the magnitude of the problem. Many, many jobs that never thought they would be replaced by electronics are being that way. As a matter of fact, a recent article in Scientific American described the capability of new computer chips, for those of you who are very much into computers and have experience with that, and the development of the technology, so that new chips are capable of having as many as, get this number, 25 billion transistors on a single chip. It sounds like a sort of a, just a game with numbers, but the consequences of this kind of technological development is the replacement of labor at all kinds of ways that we don't necessarily see clearly. At the same time, and connected with this change, there's a tremendous move further toward globalization of economics, of jobs, of cheap labor wherever it can be found. So, to a degree, the dream about re-industrializing Newark, or re-industrializing small towns, is very much a pipe dream. It's not that people shouldn't be trying to get jobs, trying to create jobs, and trying to make their best efforts at that, but it's important to deal with realities. And part of the realities are that this globalization and this electronics revolution are changing the very nature of work, and therefore the nature of the economy. In the country and in the world, we have probably the greatest disparity of wealth in history. That is, there are concentrations of people without and with, and much greater numbers of people who are doing without basic means of sustenance. Newark used to be, as you all know, a very industrial town. Manufactured railcars, the B&amp;O Railroad Depot, Round Table, Whirly Stoves, you could go on and on, glassworks, steel, all kinds of things were produced here, and the hope of looking toward that coming back is a dream. It is not a clear understanding of what's going on. In a recent paper poll, a recent newspaper article, you may have seen this, I think it was the Dispatch the other day, said that 72 percent of the population still believes they are in recession. I think that's an important number, even if the statistics are slightly off or polls vary in different ways, I think it's an important recognition, and I don't want to just be negative, but this is the population that this council and other government agencies and bodies serve. So they're saying, "We're still in a recession." Regardless of how flowery we may talk about possibilities, there's a certain reality that people are facing in terms of the job market. There may be much fuller employment at the moment, but the question at the same time is why is there an increasing level of poverty with much, much, much a greater percentage of people quote-unquote "employed"? And some other statistics that you've run into, I hope, are that probably a third of the population of Licking County is at or near the poverty level. I mean, the percentages vary. Sometimes we've said 20 percent, 25 percent. The percentages are growing because people who are actually working, some people we see in eviction court who are being evicted from homes that now rent for more than they did last year and a few years ago. So the average rental is somewhere near $750. It was more like $650 a year ago, or two years ago. Those numbers are important because that's who this council serves. So that housing court, eviction court is often full of people who are unable to pay their bills but who are working at actual jobs. There was a transportation article editorial in The Advocate just the other day that talked about the fact that people are having more and more trouble getting to and from work, and that transportation is a vital need for the community. There's also the point about state money that has been cut to the city's budget, which the city has limped along trying to survive on and justifying all kinds of cuts or restrictions or limitations on problems, on services here, that some council members have raised questions about, but I don't believe that we fought hard enough to get some of that money back to the city and have joined with other cities in order to do that. It's a vital need, $2 million or a million and a half, or whatever the numbers are. They've required cuts to services or limitations to services. The only other point I wanted to make is that people say that if you do the same thing in changed conditions and expect different results than what you did before, that that's a measure of insanity. I know you've heard this some places along the way, but I would advise the council to struggle with this question and not be insane, not try to do the same things it's been doing, but start to address more seriously the needs of the community, not just to a paved roundabout around City Hall, but to people who are not having enough food, not having enough, not being able to pay for shelter, not having transportation, not having adequate paying jobs. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone else for this first section?
Mr. President.
Mr. Guthrie.
Mr. President, before we get into the agenda, I just had a question. I apologize, I was talking with Autumn about it. When we had our Rules Committee meeting, my recollection, Doug, is that we voted for the legislation with the ethics training, and we tabled the issue of the actual rule change until next week. However, the training legislation is not on the agenda, and so I don't know. You know, shame on me because I obviously missed it in the minutes. Do you remember Doug, was it in the minutes that we voted out?
Was there? I'm sorry. I thought I saw it in the minutes that we voted out.
No, they were tabled. I see, I thought.
You thought they tabled both?
I thought it was two separate things.
Oh, okay.
I didn't realize it was two separate things.
Okay. Mr. South, is there anything we could do about that since it was not on the agenda even though we made a mistake?
I suppose with the consent of the majority and minority leader under Rule 11, it could probably be brought up for a first reading tonight. It's a little creative interpretation of rule.
This is one time I'll go along with it.
Yeah. With no objection from Mr. Guthrie, I think it probably will be all right.
Wow. That'll be a change of pace.
I didn't realize it was two separate.
Two separate pieces.
So is that all right with the majority and minority leader that we put that on the agenda for the second, next one? Probably ought to. We'll have to, if you have it there, we could at least read it for our first reading before we're done. It was not, I don't think that section was amended, was it?
Yes, it was.
It was.
So we did.
The preamble was not amended.
Okay, I have it, it's.
We could just read the preamble as the first reading.
The preamble didn't change, correct?
Uh-uh.
Just the body of the legislation.
So at least that way, the first reading, is that okay with everybody? Okay.
Do you want this?
Would you pass that down this way, and we'll?
I do have it.
We'll do it. Sorry.
It was buried further.
Or we'll do it first.
I'm gonna say it was first, I could do it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I do too.
Resolutions on the first reading, ordinance number?
Mr. Guthrie, you're gonna sponsor it. Ordinance 15-31.
15-31.
How's that? Mr. Guthrie will be the sponsor.
Please read it.
And ordinance creating Chapter 218 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio regarding mandatory ethics training for certain elected and appointed officials.
15-31 will be held for a second reading.
Thanks, and I apologize for not catching that.
Well, my fault too. I should have caught that too, so. Okay, let's go with 15-32.
All right. Ordinance 15-32 by Mr. Raff, and ordinance amending the pay range and department authorization tables of the Department of Economic and Community Development for the positions of grant writer, residential program supervisor, economic development coordinator, and an office manager, account clerk, and setting compensation therefore. The positions of assistant director, planner, two building inspectors, building inspector, letter risk assessor, and office assistant account clerk, code enforcer will be abolished.
15-32 will be held for a second reading in two weeks. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 15-100.
Resolution 15-100 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for the demolition of 116 Union Street.
You heard the second reading, 15-100. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Cos, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-100.
Motion to adopt 15-100 by Mr. Cos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-100? Autumn, please call the roll, vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes. 15-100 passes 10-0. Next, we have 15-101.
Resolution 15-101 by Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the City of Newark, Ohio to negotiate and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for professional engineering services in connection with the design and construction of an anaerobic digestion system upgrade projects pursuant to Article 10.02D of the Charter of the City of Newark. This contract for professional services does not require competitive bidding.
You've heard the second reading of 15-101. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Cos, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-101.
Motion by Mr. Cos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-101? Seeing that, Autumn, please call the roll, vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes. 15-101 passes 10-0. Next on the agenda, resolutions on the first reading, 15-103.
Resolution 15-103 by Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to execute a contract for reimbursement of legal representation of indigent persons for calendar year 2016 with the Licking County Board of Commissioners for the City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio.
15-103 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 15-104.
Resolution 15-104 by Mr. Cos and Mr. Raff, a resolution establishing the base rate for the stormwater utility service charge as authorized by Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio.
15-104 will be held for a second reading for two weeks. Next, we have 15-105.
Resolution 15-105 by Mr. Cos and Mr. Raff, a resolution authorizing the mayor to make application to and enter into agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation State Infrastructure Bank for a loan in the amount of $6,630,000 for the Mount Vernon Road improvement projects, authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to effectuate the same and declaring an emergency.
15-105 is an emergency, so it only has one reading. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Cos, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-105.
Second motion by Mr. Cos, second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-105?
Mr. President, Cos. We do have an O.D., state deadline sort of thing, we need to make sure we are in time for, so we need to move this along.
Mr. Cos, anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll, vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
No.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
15-105 passes 9 to 1. Next, we have 15-106.
Resolution 15-106 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
15-106 will be held for two weeks for a second reading, and finally tonight, we have 15-107.
Resolution 15-107 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
15-10, Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, move away from the two-day reading rule.
Motion by Mr. Blake to wait the two-day reading rule, second by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake.
I want to transfer these funds before the end of year.
Mr. Blake, Autumn, please call the roll, away the two-day reading rule.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes. The two-day reading rule has been passed 10-0. Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, you to adopt 15-107.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 15-107? Seeing that, Autumn, please call the roll, vote.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
And Mr. Cos.
Yes. 15-107 passes 10-0. Thank you for your attention. That concludes the legislation this evening. Next, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. The same rules apply. Do we have anyone? Mr. Butcher.
Mr. Butcher, 263 Union Street, I got a good question, but maybe he got my answer. How long it's gonna take the new charter that's gonna be finished? Some of my friends that works at the branch wants to know how long it's gonna take that the new charter that opened, and the thing is, my friend Mark, he's been complaining about the streets around here, and he likes to know what the city's gonna do about the potholes, the potholes, the regular bumps in the streets. He likes to know what the city's gonna do about that. But it passed.
Thank you, William. Mr. Crawford. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. What's in a name? More importantly, what's in a name that is supposed to represent a group of people? It has been asserted that affixing the label Bulldogs or Wildcats to a sports team or a school is equal to doing the same with respect to Redskins. If Redskins is offensive, then what about the other two names? Is it not logical to say that calling your team the Bulldogs is an insult to Bulldogs? No. It is not logical to make such a comparison, because these labels have very different histories. In what sense can we say that an animal-based mascot is an affront to those animals? I know of no examples where the labels Bulldogs or Wildcats were used to disparage those creatures, and I'm willing to bet that none of you are able to think of any either. Let's get to the point here. A few weeks ago, a fellow citizen spoke up about the use of Redskins as a mascot, about how the use of Redskins as a mascot must come to an end. We've seen the backlash against political correctness for quite some time now. In some instances, I'm in solid agreement that this PC movement has overstepped its bounds. But here is one area where the backlash is dead wrong. In case you need some background information to understand why, here it is. For an example, in an educational textbook published and distributed in the late 1800s in New England entitled A New Primary Geography, 1886, young students were taught in pages 24 through 25 about five races of people, with the red race being associated with those people which our forefathers referred to as Indians. In case you make the mistake of concluding that the term is harmless even here, the textbook went on to say on page 26 that "the various races of men differ greatly in regard to knowledge and manner of living. For this reason, they are sometimes divided into four classes: savage, barbarous, half-civilized, and civilized." A little further, it continues, "Savages are the lowest and most degraded class. The Indians and most of the Negro tribes are savages. Savage and barbarous tribes are almost always engaged in war." Then the book wraps up this portion of its racist indoctrination by reassuring its young superior race readers that "almost all civilized people belong to the white race." We know that red skin wasn't just a derogatory label, but a violent one as well. In sharing an excerpt from an 1863 edition of one Minnesota newspaper, Baxter Holmes of Esquire points out at least one troubling use of the word. "The state reward for dead Indians has been increased to $200 for every red skin sent to purgatory." Then that same announcement followed up by noting that this reward was greater than the value of all extinguished Indians east of the Red River. There is some debate as to whether this particular advertisement for murder was calling for the scalps of Native Americans, which wasn't an uncommon practice at the time. But the one thing that is clear here is that hate, not an attempt to express or inject a sense of community pride, motivated the use of red skin. How convenient of us, mostly white citizens, to stand here and proclaim that red skin is a harmless label. How convenient indeed for us white men and women who never experienced a legitimate threat to our collective existence or safety, even as our forefathers did much to ensure the same for the other so-called races. I'm not assuming that every fan or student calling themselves a red skin is racist, but what they are celebrating is an icon of evil, plain and simple. Let's try an exercise, shall we? Many of us were raised with the notion that if you can't say it to someone's face, then don't say it at all. Or if you can't do something out in the open, then it should not be done. I say, if you can't comfortably walk up to a random Native American and refer to this stranger as a red skin, then you probably shouldn't use the term at all. Moreover, if you can't use the other skin terms equally, then that should say something about the level of decency attached to the word. Ask yourself, if you were starting from scratch, would you be in favor of naming Newark's high school team the Newark Redskins? Or what about the Newark White Skins, the Newark Yellow Skins, the Newark Brown Skins, or even the Newark Black Skins? Of course you wouldn't dare to think of choosing one of the latter four, because that would obviously be racist, right? So how is red skin any different? Perhaps red skin is preferable because it seems to communicate something intimidating like the Wildcat and Bulldog mentioned earlier. Think about that for a second, while also remembering that the aforementioned piece which claimed that Native American red skin savages are almost always at war. Bear in mind that our white ancestors were taught to fear the Redskins because of their perceived ruthlessness and brutality. Now look at this situation from the opposite end. If you were a Native American citizen, would you be happy to pay taxes for and/or send your child to a school with a label that used this term? If not, then I think the answer is clear. The time to stop calling anyone a red skin was yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Mr. Moran. Anyone else? Okay. Wrap this up.
Paul Moran, 63 North Fourth Street. Put together here five Newark problems. Give you the titles, I won't go into details, but one is housing, another one, transportation, jobs, vacant commercial buildings, and neglected city-owned properties. And public servants should be leading the way in doing this. And I'd like to invite all residents to do and share a five-matters list of their choosing, whatever it may be, and share right here. Come here to the people's podium and just share with everybody, no matter who it is, that they would come together and put together a list. It could be ideals, suggestions, it could be a number of things. I invite everybody in the community to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Who wants for the administration to see?
Our honor, Mr. Johnson.
Pass, Mr. President. Pass, Mr. Johnson.
Our law director, Sassen.
So many things I would like to say, Mr. President. But I remember the last time we met and Mr. Marmy's comments during miscellaneous when he so very clearly and with such great foresight highlighted what an honor it would be for Ohio State to play Clemson in a ballgame this year. Unfortunately, not enough people were paying attention to Mr. Marmy. So I'll just say, go Tigers.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mayor Hall.
Yes, just since last weekend was the committees, and this is our first council meeting since Thanksgiving. I just wanted to give a shout out and thank the Salam family for the wonderful job they did on Thanksgiving morning, delivering nearly five hundred meals through support. And thank them and everyone that helped them, but surely all twelve members. Skip and Carol brought up a family that have learned to give back to the community, and I was down to see them the night before, and how they had that prepared and set up was just quite phenomenal. And they helped the Salvation Army for people in need to have a better Thanksgiving, and surely from the nourishment side. And I just want to thank you for that because that's above and beyond by far, and they've done it for years, those type of ventures. But thank you very much, and the citizens that helped out delivering those. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Floyd?
I just want to mention a couple of things that have been going on. You know, I promote the Midland as much as I can. Last night, for those of you who weren't able to go, the Newark-Grandville Symphony played with the choirs from Newark High School and Grandville High School. It was a fabulous concert. It was wonderful. And before the concert, in front of the Midland Theater, the Newark High School Choir sang Christmas carols for about half an hour. And when you went inside, the Grandville Choir was on the steps leading up to the balcony, singing Christmas carols for like a half hour before the show started. It was just an absolutely wonderful Christmas show. And this Friday, the Midland is doing Polar Express. Now, I know the movie's been on TV many times, but it's fun to s- I've worked at it the last several years, and families bring their little kids in their pajamas. Those of you who've seen the movie know the little boy is in his pajamas. They have a conductor when people come in, so the conductor can click the kids' tickets. They give them a bell, like there's a bell in the movie, and then they watch the show. Last year, it was almost packed. It used to be just, I think it's five dollars to go. And it used to be that people just went in and sat, and there'd be, you know, a few couple hundred or so. Last year, it was so crowded. This year, they're doing regular seating because it's hard to get enough people, you know, to fill up all the seats. So they're doing assigned seating this year. But there are fabulous things going on in Newark. I know it's a tough time for a lot of people, and I know we certainly have problems in our community, but there are good things going on as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, Mayor, I'm glad you mentioned Skip. I know that I've said something in the past about the fact that he, um, something that we just basically never hear of is, you know, one business in their own radio ads promoting other businesses. But he's done that, encouraging people to go out and support those businesses at Buckeye Lake that are really hurting because of the water levels out there, and I just think that's awesome. And I'll plug here for Caris's cause. He and his family made a very generous contribution to our mission to help families who have kids with childhood cancer. I just wanted to say, I really appreciated the point that Dave Green made earlier regarding industrial jobs and other jobs. And I just, uh, one of the things that I'm seeing, because I'm getting old, is a lot of my fellow getting-old people are working two and three jobs in their retirement years because of the fact that that's just what it takes these days to go, to keep going, and subsidize their Social Security to the degree that they're allowed to do that. It's a shame that they have to be penalized for making a few extra dollars above fifteen thousand. But Mr. Green, and Mr. Crawford, and Mr. Moran, in case I forget to say this at the next meeting, I think that in a lot of ways, you bring forth, you know, a level of consciousness that needs to come forward at these council meetings. Whether people agree with all your positions or not, I think it's really important, and I really admire you. And come, you know, next year, when I'm watching these things on my computer, I'm going to be hoping to see you all and listen to you. I'm glad that Carol brought up the Midland because I think, I may have mentioned that I went to see a guy I always wanted to claim as my cousin, Arlo Guthrie, there a few weeks ago, and it was just a fantastic concert, and the place was just packed for people from all over Ohio. And it was sort of neat because it was his fiftieth, fifty years since he did Alice's Restaurant. So it's pretty neat. Hope some of the others have got to see it. So with that, that's all I have. Oh, no, there is one other thing I did want to mention. That is, you know, as we see these terrible murders that have taken place, these senseless murders that have taken place in the last two or three weeks in our country, it reminds us again of the importance of our first responders. And, you know, the mayor alluded to it, also alluded to it in a previous meeting where we had a chat, and that is just, we cannot say enough about the importance of these folks to our community and how they're, you know, they're going in when the others are coming out. And so we're lucky to have them, and I'm proud to try my very best to be an advocate for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Hall?
Thank you. I'd like to call a Capitol Improvement Committee meeting. Anything with that?
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson?
Well, I think we should wish a happy birthday to Mr. Raff because today is his birthday.
Happy birthday.
And again, I think today, December seventh, I said to Mrs. Floyd, I thought maybe I was the only one that was here at the time, but she corrected me. But I think we should really remember what that's meant to our country, and we kind of lose perception because of all the things that are happening around. And again, we need to remember what we're all about, and it's important that we are a strong, strong country. And again, your comments about the Christmas concert was absolutely wonderful, and we should be so proud to have that opportunity. And then I want to comment about the opening of the First Roundabout, which was very, very nice. And I think we can look forward to, it's going to really look nice once we get it all together. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call a Rules Committee meeting. In addition, I would also like to extend a happy birthday to Mr. Raff. I too, on this day, definitely want to pay my gratitude to those who served in the military, not only at that time, but also since then and even previous to that. A gentleman came into my office today and just happened to be talking to him. He's retired Air Force. He was talking about, I said, well, what were your favorite locations? He said, I never had a bad one. And he said, I even did two stints in Vietnam. He said, because I'm still alive, and I did what I needed to do, and this country's better off for it. So, you know, comments like that and meeting individuals like that, it truly, on a day like today, you know, every December seventh, I don't know, I wasn't around, but I still remember the day like I was. Maybe it was the movies that kind of glorified it, or this J.D. Grant drilling it into our head in history class. But it definitely resonates with me, and I definitely appreciate what those folks have done. Thank you. I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Mr. Raff? Happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you. And there's other reasons to mention and celebrate today. Mr. Walden has a birthday today as well. Happy birthday. Share that birthday. Call an Economic Development Committee meeting, and we'll be open.
Mr. Raff, Mr. Roletta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to mention how honored I was to be part of raising funds for Salvation Army this weekend. I was a bell ringer here locally with other members of Newark Awanis, and it's such a great feeling, so many generous people in our community. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have actually a few thank yous before I get into some other comments. First, I want to thank Director Mauder. Last Friday, we, he spent a half-day with me over at Columbus at Economic Development four-one-one, which is a gathering of about four hundred, five hundred different economic development professionals throughout the Columbus region. And, you know, I thought it was really educational and really, and it sort of brings about those idea makings and those collaborations and partnerships that we work with, not only as the City of Newark, but with other government entities and also private entities as well. And so I just want to thank you for picking me up and driving over there and getting me back safely. So I've always enjoyed spending time with Mark to go do that. But also going along with economic development, last week at the Impact Awards, the mayor and his administration, the government of Licking County, and then the Evans Foundation won the collaboration award for the Canal Market District. And so I just want to, you know, again, congratulate the mayor and his administration and team for working with those other entities to bring about the Canal Market District that's going to be important to our, to our future of our community. And so, you know, and I just thought that that was a great ceremony. And again, that was at the Midland Theater showcasing another jewel in our community. But at the same time, on that same night, the Convention and Visitors Bureau had a rebranding. And so if you haven't been to their new website, it's explorelc.org. And so that's the new, Explore Licking County is what it stands for, but that's the new Convention and Visitors Bureau website, and so I encourage you to go do that. And just a lot of good work going on through our community and wanting to work in collaboration and partnership with so many good folks. The chief's not here tonight, but I did want to thank him. He gave a very thorough tour of the police station to our Newark Youth Council. We had, you know, our youth went through the police station, saw every little corner of the police station, so went down to the records room, went up to, even saw the heating and cooling system. So, you know, that's over two million dollar thing, so he wanted to show us that. But we had a really good tour, and we're looking forward to taking the youth council to the new fire station here in two weeks. And so I want to thank Chief Connor in advance for giving us a tour there. I do want to say that there's, I do want to call Finance Committee meeting for next week. I believe all members of council have received copies of the budget, and you're taking this opportunity to meet with appropriate administrators and getting questions answered and just having time to prepare and digest that information in preparation for next committee meeting. So please, please come ready for the budget next week. And again, thank you, David, for reaching out, and we had a good meeting. I believe he's reached out to all of you. And so just thank you for your leadership, and thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Johnson, you and Lori, I must definitely thank you so much for preparing what we're going to be discussing next week. Because I think it does focus on, going on with Mr. Guthrie had mentioned, that it does focus on our first responders. We're able to provide the level of service that we currently have, and it's going, considering all the violence and evil going on in our world, our first responders are very important, and we're going to be able to provide for them within this coming budget. So I think that's very important. I do want to say something about, Mr. Green came up, and there is a lot of discussion. It is interesting where people discuss the unemployment rate versus the poverty level because many times, you know, the unemployment rate does not reflect the complete picture of our community. And so I do think, and I do agree with the comments related to where the poverty rate much more can reflect what exactly is going on with standards of living and quality of life within a community. So I just want to echo some of the things that he was saying there. And then I just want to say to Mr. Crawford, you know, thank you because I think you have brought out that words do matter. And, you know, no matter if it's words being said in this room or if it's words being said in our daily media, considering with, you know, different religions, different races, different extremism within different races, within different, you know, communities and societies, but words do matter. And even this evening, when a presidential candidate says certain things, words do matter. And it's very important that we reflect on what we say, and especially in public forums. And so I want to thank you for reminding us that words do matter. With that, I'll pass, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Bub?
Yes, I need to call Ways and Means Committee for next Monday evening and wish Jeff and Tim happy birthday as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Cost?
I'd like to congratulate the mayor for making a pretty successful lap around the Roundabout the other day. And I need to call for a Service Committee meeting. With that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Just a couple odds and ends. Next committee meeting will be December fourteenth at five-thirty here in this room. Our next full council meeting, actually the last one of the year, will be December twenty-first, two weeks from tonight at seven o'clock. I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Thanks to our guests in the back. I hope it wasn't too boring for you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Bub. All in favor, say "Hi." Same sign.